And I guess everybody heard that I'm going to start the recording. Okay.
Can I ask for two people to be identified?
Yeah, you can.
Tom.
Yes, sir.
If you want to unmute Tom so we can hear your name?
I'm waving my hand.
Yeah, Tom's in the conference room, but he's also joining his laptop. So he can share his screen.
I'm sorry, not alchemy, a Tom that's on the website, but he, there's no last name.
That's, that's the same Tom. It just helps them with their phone. So Tom, maybe just spell your last, spell your last name for us and I will fix that.
Last name is Beauchamp, B-E-A-U-C-H-A-M-P.
And the other, what's Joe O's? How do you spell his last name?
Are you ready?
Ready. So Joe, you're going to have to mute because we're having feedback from the, from the, your conference room. In fact, I don't know, maybe you have to mute one of the two. I see two conference rooms now. And we're getting a lot of feedback from that.
Doug, I am on mute.
Oh, okay.
Are you, are you still getting feedback?
No, it sounds good now.
Okay.
Hang on, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna label Joe here so we have everybody labeled.
I'm having a hard time finding my. Are you clear? I want, I want to get to this.
Where is it?
I could share.
Just one second here. If this will.
So go to Zoom now. And there you go, on the head share. Boom.
Okay. Okay, excellent.
Okay, can everybody see that all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
So basically, we have this parcel that is noted with the red outline. Across the street is also part of the property, the purchase that was made, but is not a part of the development that we're doing right now. The 11 Bellor LLC is going to be the landowner that purchased this property. There are four tenants that are going to be applying for applications for licensing to farm on this property. They are the four entities that you had noted at the beginning of the presentation or this meeting. You will see outlines in blue on the bottom, orange just above that, green above that, and yellow are the four farms. They're all nominally 220,000 square feet. They will all be fenced in individually with what we call deer fence. It's about eight feet tall. There will be cameras, security surveillance cameras around each one of these individual farms meeting the CCC requirements. Each of the farms will have its own drive off, off of either Bellor or Sadoga. Is that how you pronounce that road?
Yeah, that's fine.
So we have, they're, they're the little, the little white rectangles are representatively showing the entrances. Each site will have its own entrance. Each farm will, we're going to start out with a hoop house noted in the blue rectangle. And then the small little red one is going to be a office with the secure vault and the housing of the recordings from the cameras for 90 days per CCC rules.
Okay.
So we basically have a landowner and four tenants were reviewing today the four tenants' applications for licensing for special permits.
Okay, and so, and this, just for everybody else's benefit, this is, is actually for public hearings, all of which were posted separately, but we're running the meeting concurrently because I think that it's the same, everybody has the same community host agreement, which they have, which has been agreed to. And so that's the, that's the way we're dealing with that. So do, planning board members, do you, you all have this map as well? Can we, can we take the map down now? It's going to be easier for me to see and call on people if we are not screen sharing.
True.
Okay.
We go back on mute.
Okay. So, well, let's, let's open it up to public comment and get that going. I gotta get right on here. And so actually, if you use your, your raise your hand feature, that's going to be really easy. If you can't do that, let's talk to the people who are on, who I can see on video first, and then I'll get, I'll call on you individually for the people who can't raise their hand. So Bill, how about if you go first?
Thanks, Doug. I just had two questions. Just looking at that site map, the bottom three plots, they're each going to have their own drive. Did I hear that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, so the bottom three plots have how much road frontage? The top one seems to have a little more, so.
Joe, do you have that dimension off the top of your head? Jostic knowledge?
Bill, they're, it's all one property.
Oh, it is.
There was one company that owns it and is leasing it to four companies. So, so they can have more than one.
Okay. So that was my second question. You just answered it.
There's not a road frontage issue.
All right, cool. Thanks.
Okay, Alice, how about you?
You're muted.
Hi, sorry, I'm at work, so I am attempting to multitask here. I'm looking to find out what are the specific acreages. I thought it was going to be for two acre parcels, but based on the land size, that clearly is not the case.
You are correct. They're approximately 220,000 square feet, which comes out, is it nominally five, five acres each? The restriction on this is going to, go ahead.
So for a grand total of 20 acres?
20 acres of, that's roughly a 50 acre site that's outlined on that, on that map that you saw, the conceptual sketch. So yeah, 20 acres of 50 we're showing as being developed farms.
Um, as in a butter to the property, not on the butters list, but within about 425 or 450 feet. I am not opposed to marijuana farming per se. I'm not opposed to marijuana in its entirety. I do question what, I know that during the peak season between the middle of August and October during harvest season of the buds, it is extremely fragrant, if you will. Being that I work for the planning board in Col Rain where we have already approved multiple ones of this, I guess I'm questioning what you're going to do so that my 20, my house of 20 years does not devalue for anybody who is opposed to marijuana. If it was an indoor grow, I wouldn't even be on this call, but because it's an external and what I thought was eight acres, which is now apparently two and a half times the size of that, it clearly is going to affect the smell coming into my property. So I would be questioning what, what are your thoughts on what you can do to alleviate my concerns?
There's a number of different folks here. Ryan Young will, will respond to that.
So first, first and foremost, one thing I do want to point out, and you said you have firsthand experience in Col Rain, which I understand. But one thing I do want to point out is marijuana, when it's, when it's growing and, and in its natural environment as, as a floral, butter floral plant, it does not have the same odor as when somebody's smoking it. I just want to point that out because I know the general thought is it's going to smell like when somebody's smoking it or when it's being consumed. It's a very different, more fragrant smell, more of a floral smell, but does have a smell for sure. That's, that's number one. Number two, we use a misting technology that runs on the top of the fence line, and that puts out more of a lavender smell that is really meant to mask the scent. And I think it does a good job. It's kind of an invisible barrier and, and that runs 24/7. And that really dampers the smell as well. And then, as you can see from the site plan, I'm not sure where your property is located in relation to this, but we did attempt to leave as much tree buffer as possible, which also naturally breaks up the wind and the scent being carried. So those are all, all things that we employ as well. The other thing that I think is a little bit unique about us is during our harvest process, we're very careful to make sure that the plant is actually chopped down as a whole and then taken from the field into the building to be processed. And then in that building, there's layers and layers of odor control with carbon filters and other things as well that are, that are included in the HVAC system. And, and that's where a lot of the robust smell comes from, when you're actually trimming the product and stuff like that. And none of that happens in the field. I can't speak for other outdoor grows, but I know sometimes a lot of that harvest process and handling the material, which is very fragrant, happens in the field. We don't do that. We do that inside. So it's primarily those, those three categories. One is the misting on the top of the fence. Two is the technology inside the buildings. And then three is, you know, we're trying to leave some tree buffer to help mitigate that as well.
Okay, and maybe you guys, Joe or somebody can explain to everybody, because I, I don't think everybody understands exactly how you're growing it. It's not a row crop that you put in the fields. Why don't you just tell us about the technology and how you grow it in the bags? What that would look like?
Sure, no, I can share photos. I have photos of the farm.
Yeah, while he's pulling up a photo, I think is really insightful. Really, we use the latest technology in drip irrigation as well as above ground. And so what we do is we bring in high quality soil. We put that in, in fabric and bags and really put that on top of the soil. So we're not really disturbing a lot of, of the ground. And then all of the additives, all of the water, all of the fertilizers we use are things that are much less, we, we call them soft chem or they're natural ingredients that are approved by the, by the state of Massachusetts and, and the US as well for cannabis. But we don't use anything like herbicides. We don't use anything like, like strong pesticides. All of it is about the most, you know, the most, I guess the strongest chemical we use is like, is a watered down hydrogen peroxide. So the things that we use are very environmentally friendly and really minimize any use of, of fertilizers just because it's so, each of these plants are drip fed. And so it's, in terms of environmental impact, it's, it's almost, it's almost nothing.
Yeah, I always tell people, our, our goal is to use as little water as possible. And the water that we use, we use very efficiently. So if you can, if you can see the screen that Tom just shared, the difference in, in, in the plants and how dark and not dark are the ones that have been de-leafed, which is when we take the extra leaves off the plant. So the ones that look less bushy have, have been de-leafed. The ones that look much more full have not been de-leafed. And then you can see its rows, there's actually roughly six foot in between those rows with the drives to negotiate around the plants. But then the pots themselves are mylar bags that sit on top of the ground. They never actually go inside the ground. So that's, that's a really good picture of what the operation looks like. And this is, this is in, Alice, to your point, this is in the August to kind of September timeframe as well. And, and one thing I do want to add to, just on the smell mitigation, is some, some grows push well into October. Our goal is to actually finish the plant sooner than later. We just think we get a better product that way. So we, like this last year, we actually didn't go until October at all here in Michigan. We, we had everything down by middle to end of September.
All right. Thanks for that. Okay, if you could un-share, then I can see people's. Bob, go ahead. Bob Gruen.
Thank you. I don't have the clearest of understanding, and so I would like to have this explained to me. The community host agreement, I believe, asks for or required, I don't know which it is, a donation of sorts that you will give to the town. Is that correct? Am I correct in that understanding?
Hey, Mark, Mark James, he's, he's our attorney, Mark. You are very much inside of the, the HCA. Do you want to address that question? Or if not, I'm happy to. No, he's there. Mark, are you with us? Yeah, so, so I, I can, I can address the questions, no problem. So there's, there is two, two answers to your question. So number one, there is an HCA fee that we negotiated with the town and agreed on. And then the second answer is, we did agree that we would donate charitably as well to organizations within the town. And just for everybody on the call's perspective, we, we did outline some, some numbers in that. But everybody that is, is planning on farming this site in this community is very charity focused. And so we enjoy giving to charity. So those are the two buckets, though, is, is the one that, that's the fee with the HCA and then also the charitable giving that we agreed to. But we plan to do more than that, hopefully.
Okay, does each of the four renters donate to the same chosen charitable organization?
Yeah, it's a good question. So there's no specific answer to that. There, there's multiple, you know, organizations within the town that I understand to date, but there's no restriction on, on who or how. The only one that's, that's really in place right now is, is specific for the HCA fee. We have identified one organization that, that we want to give to, that we think is a good organization. But no, for example, Joe, who's sitting across the table, can, can give to other organizations and so could I as well.
So how was the list, were you given a list? Or did you search out particular organizations within the town or the area?
Yeah, I guess I don't completely understand the question.
Well, in other words, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, sorry, that was, that was to you. I apologize.
Okay, no, I, to clarify a little bit, were you given a list from the town? Or did you individually search for either town or regional organizations that you wanted to donate?
Yeah, yeah, so, sorry, my serious turn to talk as well. No, so by being in the town, we've all, we've all heard of and seen different, different needs and different charitable organizations. So, Helma, do you want to speak to this at all? Is that, I just, I, we just haven't, you know, we, it's been a minute since we negotiated the agreement. Or Mark, if you're able to speak to it more, I just want to make sure we're communicating accurately.
Are you there, Helma?
Hi, yes, I am here. I don't know if I have anything to add to what, right? I believe that's Ryan, what, the way, what he was explaining.
Well, let me ask, let me ask the, the question maybe more specifically because I didn't really get even a broad answer to it. The question I wanted to know was, did the town supply a list to the people who will be donating? Or was the list developed by the people who will be donating?
Yeah, so I guess, I think what you're asking is, do we have the choice to donate to whom we want? And the answer is yes, we do. And has there been a specific list of organizations? No. I will be asking for more ideas as well. And, and we've been given some already on, on needs that, that the community, you know, has. So I hope, I hope that answers your question.
Well, not really. But it seems that all four of the people renting the land have an option to donate money to different causes if they want. My question involves, how big was the list you were given? How many options did you have? And I guess I'd ask again, if each of the four individuals could, if they want, donate to whatever groups were on this list? If you were indeed given a list, and I, and I'm assuming you were, but that's only an assumption. I, I don't know that for a fact.
Yeah, we, to be clear, we weren't given, we weren't given a list. There's been, there's been conversation of, I don't have the HCA in front of me readily available. And I think Mark, who's on the call, might be having some, some microphone difficulties. So I'm happy to circle back to, to the HCA as well. But yeah, we weren't, we weren't given a list. And yes, we have the autonomy to donate charitably to whomever, however we choose.
Okay, we, we can come back to that. Let's, let's keep going. So Tom Rabbit, you got your hand up, or Claire? We can't hear you, Tom. I'm not sure why.
Muted.
I know you.
Not muted.
He's not muted, no.
Is the speaker on?
Hold on, I'm gonna.
Oh, he got, no, I still can't hear you, Tom. I think it's your, I think you have to find which your microphone is to make sure your microphone is working on your computer. Tom, I'll come back to you in just a little bit. Let me just keep moving, but I won't forget you, I promise. Barbara and David Gordon.
Yes, hi. I'm a little concerned about what was just brought up regarding the misting. There was a lot of discussion during the whole consideration process with the select board. There was a lot of discussion of the process for growing and harvesting and a lot of discussion about or description about drip irrigation. And I don't, I attended all of the meetings and I don't recall ever hearing about misting. Misting water in and of itself does not concern me. But the idea that you're going to be misting with something scented is really of concern to me. It makes me think about Yankee Candle and the problems that that created for the greater Deerfield community. So my question to you is, is the lavender necessary? Or if you find that that scent is disturbing residents of heat, can it be removed?
I got it. Okay, Barbara, thanks. I appreciate the, the concern. Really, we're, we're all about finding solutions that are going to make this, this farm really help. If it's not helpful, then at least it's not going to disturb the residents. And so if lavender, at the end of the day, isn't helpful, there's a couple of options we can choose, or if not misting at all is better. We're all about getting feedbacks to our, you know, from our neighbors and then finding a solution that works. And then, you know, we're not going to, you know, I think so far we've, we've reached out to our, to our neighbors, and if they give us good ideas or feedback, we're going to be taking that. So we're not going to give you a scented candle that you don't like to smell of. We're happy to, you know, to switch it up. There are some other more neutral applications as well. But again, it's going to be a bit of a, of a feedback loop from, from the resident.
What do you mean by neutral? I, I guess I don't understand why putting any scent in the mist is important to your process. Maybe you could explain that.
So to be fair, to be fair, we don't mist on our other, on any other farm that we do. And it's very reasonable in terms of the, the odor that comes from it. We haven't had any complaints at all. But we know that, that there are farms out there that do mist. And so we just want to put that on the table, that that is a technology that if ultimately there is, you know, there is a desire for us to do something about the odor, which, which like Ryan said, when it comes from living plants, is more, is more fragrant and floral than anything else. We're willing to apply any, any technology that we have to help. But if it's not helpful, we certainly won't do it. And I would actually recommend that we start by not using any misting and just to see how the first season goes. And then, and then get feedback from the, you know, from the residents and say, should we try something? Is something necessary here?
Thank you. Airborne goes farther than your immediate neighbors.
What then?
I'm saying airborne processes permeate farther than your immediate neighbors.
Oh, fair enough, fair enough. Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Bob, the Oingo.
Yeah, could you, could you describe what happens after you've taken the plants out of the pots and put them into the, I think it's called the hoop house? uh, out of the pots and put them into the, I think it's called the hoop house? What happens at that point?
Hi, Bob, um, this is Joe. So um, after, after we, we harvest the plant, and as Ryan said earlier, we harvest the whole plant. And then we take it into a facility where really it needs to dry for approximately, you know, 10 days. And so the first, the first process is, is drying down to get the moisture out. Um, and then after that, it really goes to, uh, we call it the, you know, bucking stage, which you take, you know, you take the stems out of it. You take the, the hardwood um, core out of it. And then you go through a trimming stage, um, which basically tumbles the, the flower. And then you put it in bags. So not a super complicated, but it really, it's about drying and getting the, the flower set, um, you know, tumbled so it, it looks, it looks good. The whole process from beginning to end, um, you know, it, all going well. For if you take one, you know, one average plant, um, that process takes about a month.
And, and then the product is shipped out in bags, is that correct?
Yep, that's right. So we'll package these things in one pound to five pound bags. Um, and then those will get, uh, get put in, in small vans and taken out.
Uh, okay, and a related question, uh, how much traffic is there going to be during the harvesting period?
That's a good question. And then, and um, I think uh, there's a little bit of a misconception that there will be, you know, uh, truck, you know, large 18-wheelers or trucks going in and out of the farm. In reality, um, once a week, I, I, I think you'll have a lot more Amazon trucks going through Heath than you will have any cannabis. Um, we, you'll probably see once a week, there'll be like an Amazon type delivery van that comes and picks up the product and takes it out. Um, but it'd almost be unnoticedable in terms of, um, the, as the product goes out.
Okay, and the last question is, will you be hiring local people?
You know, as much as we can, we like, we'd love to. Um, if anyone is interested in agronomy, if anyone is interested in understanding, you know, the science of plants and in cultivation, it really is a beautiful and, um, and very technical place to work. And so, you know, we've, we've already, we've already had interest um, by a few of our, of our neighbors to get involved. Um, and so we're absolutely, absolutely willing to hire local talent. That's what we think is the best.
Thank you.
And that's both for the construction and the ma, and the operations of the business. And we're, and just to piggyback what Joe said, we're, we're, we're having conversations with um, local people as we can get ahold of them. We've, we've asked some different residents of Heath for lists of local contractors and, and local people that are interested. Absolutely, it's our preference to, to have the vocal people.
Our neighbor is currently plowing our driveway for us, so we're, we go as local as we can.
Yeah.
All right, let me, let me go back and see if we can hear from Tom Rabbit again. Can you try, Tom?
How about that?
Oh, we can hear you. Actually, Tom, we're still not, we're, it's just too quiet. Can you turn the volume up?
Um,
oh, that was a little better. Hey, Tom, would you mind emailing me your question? Can you do that? You just email, email Doug, doug@douglasmason.com. And I, just email to me right now, I'll read it to everyone. Um, okay, so now, um, let's see, I'll just zip through the people. Heather Benz, do you, are, are, do you have something that you want to ask? Calvin or Jan Carr, would you like to ask anything?
Yeah, Doug, thanks a lot. Um, I, I have a couple of questions, but first of all, who's the owner of the property? These are the four tenants. Who, who, who's buying the property?
This is Mark James, an entity named Eleven Belloar LLC, a Massachusetts limited liability company.
Who are they? Who are they? Who, who was Eleven Belloar Road LLC?
Uh, it's, it's Chris, he's here with us.
I, I don't know if you can hear me.
We can hear you.
So, so yeah, I own Eleven Belloar.
Who, who is Eleven Belloar Road LLC? Who are the people?
Chris, Chris, Chris Ytuma.
Okay, so you're the, you're the buyer, the sole owner?
Of the property, correct.
And you're leasing it to yourself and three other people?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jan, did you want to ask anything?
Nope.
Um, uh, who, who is, what's Carol's last name and do you want to ask a question? Are you with us, Carol?
It's, it's Wolf, but we don't have any questions right now.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to, for the record. Uh, Catherine Hurley, do you have any questions?
Uh, sure, I would just like to know, um, from the Alchemy Cannabis, um, uh, just the conference room. Do you mind just all going around on the table and saying your names and the specific company each, uh, that you're from?
Yeah, sure. Uh, Ryan Young, Alchemy Cannabis.
Uh, Joe Gordhammer, um, yeah, I'm with Vibes.
My brother Greg, uh, you two, we can get a room, I can grab him. And then I'm Chris Ytuma, we're the other two cannabis companies.
And then Tom's also in the room with us and he's the construction manager on the project.
All right, Michael Schaefer.
Good evening, Ward, uh, I'm Mike Schaefer from Huntley Associates in Northampton. Uh, we are the engineers for the project, so I really don't have any questions for you. I'm just kind of listening in and hearing what comments and questions you might have.
Okay, thanks. I remember who you are now. Um, Mark James, I know.
Like an example of the local talent.
Um, and, and Tom, is that, that's Tom Beauchamp, you're just coming up as Tom, is that right? You're on the phone?
Yeah, so I could screen share, so I, I, I logged in and muted.
Okay, no problem.
But I have no question.
Um, and Barbara Road.
Yes, I do have a few questions. Thanks, Doug.
Yep.
Um, so, hi, everyone. I do live on uphill on Sadaga Road. Um, so the, I would start with, how many workers do you expect will be needed daily? And then both during the growing season and during off-season for that question?
Hey, Barbara, um, good to, good to meet you. Um, glad to see our neighbors are on here, looking forward to meeting you. Um, so during the growing season, you know, once, once these plants are, are in the pots and they're, you know, they're all nice and happy, we really have a kind of a skeleton crew of, call it 10 to 12 people who are, who are, you know, across all the farms, um, taking care of them. And so it's not a lot of people, um, in terms of, of, of nurturing them in that sense.
So that would be during off-season, during the skeleton crew? And what, what's the larger crew?
Well, that was, that's during the growing season. So, you know, when harvest comes, I think, you know, we could, we could double that. Uh, you really have to bring in a lot of, a lot of plants, you know, within about a month. And so it roughly, roughly doubles the number of, of people that we bring in.
So we could look at 24 employees on a daily uh, period during harvest season? So harvest season is, is like, how many days long?
September 1, except it's, it's a month of September.
So for a month, harvest season is approximately a month?
Approximately, yeah.
24 employees per day for all four of the lessees, correct? As a target.
So, yeah, we have Barbara, 24 to, 24 to 35, 40, tops, tops? And, and look, the way, the way it scales out to is, um, uh, March, April, um, you have that minimal crew, um, that Joe spoke about. Um, and then that, that flows all the way into, into August. Then during September, you get that uptick. And then end of September, most of the work that's going on is inside the buildings. Um, anyways, another, another thing that I want to point out too is operationally, um, employees don't just come and go. It's all, you know, one shift, it's all, um, you know, more normal farming hours. So, so employees come, they're, they're encouraged and, uh, and, and required to stay, um, uh, onsite. So we try to minimize traffic during that time as much as possible as well. Just, just one time coming in and one time leaving.
And, and it should be noted too, it's, it's going to be, you know, there's a home there, the, the, the people that run the farm, you know, are going to live there. I'm sorry.
So, so those are, those are some of my subsequent, uh, questions. So, in the maximum period of time where it could be, we'll call it, I'll go on the low side, the 24, and then you jumped up to 35 to 40 tops for the month of September. Yeah, are they, um, and I'm not really, I'm not, it's not really a concern of mine, so much the traffic. I'm actually uphill. So, um, so, and I will have a few questions for the town after the amount of people for the daily workers. So I'm just trying to, to um, visualize how many people would be working on the farms. Um, and I'm just looking at it as one large unit, even though you guys have four individual units. Um, um, you know, the, the maximum number, 35 to 40 people tops that you quoted, that would be for the whole property. I'm expecting on the high end, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, to keep, to say in other words, you know, there's four farms.
10 for farm.
You know, three during the growing season, 10 during the short harvest period. And then, uh, obviously in the off-season, it would really just be a caretaker, you know, very, you know, in the winter months, but very limited. You know, just like someone operating, you know, occupying the home. And then to your point, times that by the four, which is the numbers that we're talking about.
Okay, so, so what do you plan, whether they are staying overnight or coming and going on a daily basis? What do you plan for bathroom facilities for that many people on the busy season? Is there, I know obviously a septic for that three-bedroom house would not accommodate 35 to 40 people daily. So what's the plan for septic for bathroom?
So currently the, uh, on the map that we showed you, there was a drawing, uh, that would have the secured vault. That would be an office, there would be bathroom facilities, uh, to wash your hands, clean up before and after shifts. Uh, so that is, each farm will have its own bathroom washing facilities. Um, we won't have, and no one will stay overnight on the farms. Across the street in the house, the caretaker, uh, the operations manager will reside in that home. And, uh, and that would be one person that's not, not really driving to and from work, they'll walk across the street. But all the other, uh, folks that work onsite will have bath, adequate bathroom facilities at each farm.
So is there a septic plan for all of those facilities?
That has not been fully designed yet, but it, whether it be, uh, sep, separate septic fields or if it is, uh, uh, a lot of times you'll see, uh, temporary water in sep, uh, you'll have those porta potty guys kind of that can, i- if it's part of a, um, trailer, they can still, uh, bring potable water in and, uh, and they would get rid of the waste. We'd have a service that would do that, if we don't have a septic field available.
Okay, um, and if there were septic available, uh, septic fields available, I would assume that there'd be proper perk testing required for that. I, I, this is not my expertise, but, um,
No, you're, you're, you're right on, right on the money there. If, uh, we would do that with, with, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, I think you answered my question on that. Um, so I would just ask the town to make sure there's due diligence on, on septic if needed for that quantity of people. And then, um, so back to the high season of 35 to 40 tops. Um, we have a road here and I am in my 20, I remember how old my kid number three is, 23 years old. I'm up here 24 years. And we have a road that there are sections of the road during mud season, which can max out two weeks on average every year, that a normal car that has any, you know, a normal sedan-type car that doesn't have very high clearance will get trapped and buried in the mud down by where we used to call the mailboxes um, before Underwood splits off, which we're all crossing through. That with the traffic up here is actually a car that needs to be towed out of the pit. So if we're bringing in even the skeletal crew, um, coming and going in the mud season um, for the daily workers, is there, I just kind of post this question out there. Is there a plan for the town to either A, pave our road to eliminate that? Or B, um, taken to consideration that even though the highway department does a tremendous job of dropping gravel when it's needed, there still is several emergencies per year of cars buried in the mud pit. Alice, Alice has been there, we've all been there. So I'd like to welcome you neighbors, if you didn't think of that, you need to. And you need to put that disclaimer to your employees that they may be a little late to work because their car is stuck in the mud pit. So that's, um, that's one, one concern. Um, and you, you did address, um, like one Amazon van per week versus the trucks. I did have that question, so that's already been asked and answered. But also during the construction phase, that is definitely a consideration for our highway department and town to have a solution for all of us to get in and out safely. And, um, and one final question does, to the town, do they have any interest in poking through the seasonal closure that's, uh, north of my house? They do not plow north of my house, um, during, during a huge chunk of the year, six months of the year when we have snow. So are we cutting through to Vermont and are your workers coming from Vermont? And is that a plan in play? And, uh, it would be nice to know that, that ahead of time. Thank you.
Okay, that, so I just want to answer two of your questions quickly. If they want to, if they, to get a building permit, um, they, they'll need to have a septic plan. They're not going to, they can't make a, they can't get a building permit to do something, uh, that's not up to code for septic. Um, so that's, that's, I don't think a problem. There, there's no plan that I've ever heard to change roads north into Vermont. So, um, whoever comes to work here is going to have to come, um, the way they would come already. So let me, actually, I have a bunch of questions in the chat here. So just hold on, hold on, everybody, I still see your hands. Um, let me ask a couple directly from the chat. All right, Tom Rabbit would like to know, uh, what are the security arrangements for the facilities? And before that gets answered, I'll just say that security, these got, the, the, the companies have to have a license from the state. The license from the state is very, very restrictive and very spelled out. They have to have a security system, they have to have security cameras. They can't do this, uh, they can't do this without a license from the state. Um, so that's not really what the pla, I mean, the planning board has to make sure this all happens, but, um, but they couldn't do it without that. But I'll let you address, you guys can address the security arrangements.
So, this is Tom Beauchamp with the, um, construction end of things. Um, per state guidelines, we can't operate unless we meet, uh, these requirements. Security, you have to have a perimeter fence, the site has to be secured at all times. You have a secure vault, you have, uh, cameras, uh, that have to be, uh, recording, they're catching all the aisles. Uh, they're, they have to hold in storage 90 days of recording. Uh, the state heavily regulates this. The state heavily regulates this. And as a business owner, the, the farm tenants want to make sure their product is secure. You know, we're going to take all measures that are required to make sure that our product is, is secure and that people are, if they, you can't stop. I hate to give my own personal, you know, if somebody wants to get in somewhere, they can get in through a, a brick wall, steel, whatever it is. But again, the cameras are there for a reason. They're going to catch people. There's a, if they, if they do attempt this, there's going to be repercussions for that. So.
Yeah, just a personal note on this one. So I, I have cameras attached to my phone on the farm, different farms we have. And it's, there's nothing quite like waking up at two o'clock in the morning when your phone is ringing and you see a spider crawling across. You have the camera lens and you have it in your hand. So yeah, we do, we do monitor these things 24/7 and we, we take it. The worst, really the worst we've had is, you know, we've got a deer somehow got in there. Or you have some fox that, that make their way through there and we have to chase them out. But that's, that's the most we've ever had to deal with. It is a very secure area.
And also is the, this is also from Tom Rabbit. Is there going to be a physical presence 24/7? Like is the caretaker there all the time?
Yes. And so that's why we really appreciate this piece of property right across the street. That's going to be the farm, the, the farm manager's place. And so they will be, will be there, will be there. If anybody has a question or a concern or anything, we're going to be, we're going to be there.
Okay. And I think there was one more. Hang on, give me one second here. Oh, please explain the relationship between Alchemy, Tru Vega and VY. What's the relationship between the four farms? Are they competitors? Are they working together?
Yeah. So, so it's, it's nothing more than a, a co-op. As noted earlier, Chris, Chris owned the property and, and is leasing out to multiple operators and it's just a co-op working together.
Bill, do you want, yeah, just, you know, we're, 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 you know, four different operators are leasing from one landlord, you know, just similar to a lot of different, you know, development opportunities.
If, if I can just assist, I'm Phil Silverman. I'm compliance consultant for the companies. They're four separate companies. The, the term co-op is a loaded term that, that we don't really inadvertently using that. They're four separate companies. They're technically competitors. They can use different processes and they can do, you know, if they want to use different grow methods, they can use them, but they are four separate companies.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay. And I will tell you, the chat function is actually working very well. So if you want to give me a question in chat, if I can't see you, go for it. And Alice, I'll come back to you. I think you've raised your hand again.
I just had a couple of follow-ups because I had a follow-up before and I just wasn't sure whether I, what I could, how long I could go as a first person. So I wanted to be gracious. I know with the misting that the, and the drip, water drip thing, are you looking at drilled wells for that? I know there's a pond on site and what is the use or non-use of that pond? In cold rain on one of my farms, I was contacted by the cannabis commission inspectors because of water use from a pond. So I was just curious on that.
Alice, thanks. Thanks for your, your question. You know, there is a pond on site. I think, you know, we've talked to the, the fire department and there may be a, we're going to talk to the fire department. There may be a use for emergency water at the pond. We don't intend to use that for, for the plants. We do intend to have wells on, on the property to, you know, to, to feed the plant. Yeah.
All right. I guess in a follow-up to that, is there any concern when periodically we have dry spells in seasons? And I think was two years ago, we had one up our way when, you know, we're just doing general vegetation and grass and you're looking at dealing with 20 plus acres of plants.
I mean, certainly, certainly the water, we need the water to, to grow the plants. But you know, that's why we, we've installed the drip irrigation. Whereas a normal crop, a hay crop or any other crop would use, use pivot. I mean, that, that would use hundreds of times the kind of water we're talking about. We're talking about a couple gallons, you know, a, a day for the, for plants. And so it really is a minimal use. Any other type of farming technique, like I said, would, would use at least five to 10 times as much water as we're using. So we wouldn't, don't expect it to have that much impact as, as your standard agricultural use.
Okay. And just a couple last minute things from my perspective. I guess I hope that as a condition of the special permit for the planning board, that there is a written in that there will be a reach out to the community, particularly the neighbors, whether it's on the butters list or not. I'm off of it by about 120 something feet. But did not know about the original outreach meeting. And as a town employee, I would have thought that I would have heard about it and did not. So when we talk about community outreach and whatnot, and I'm watching the trucks going back and forth up and down my road and there's been no reach out to me, they're driving by two to six times a day. So I would hope that as a condition of the planning board's decision that if that is there, if, that that would be a requirement.
So let me just ask, what's, what's, what exactly that, does that mean? That's a little bit vague that we, that we write in something that they reach out to you for?
That they, that while there, you can say what you want to say in a public forum. I mean, we, anyone can. But as a most special permits or variances or whatever, there can be conditions written in. And that while they talk about this misting and whether it's impacting, and I know Barbara Gordon was talking about how, I mean, if I'm 425 feet off the southerly property line of a field, it would impact me. As she's saying, it can impact other people that are half a mile down the road with the wind and whatnot. So I would just ask that the companies or the Beller Road LLC be required to reach out to the neighbors, whether they be immediate or at least on the roads that they're traveling into it.
Okay. Bill Fontes, you've got your hand up.
Thanks Doug. You know, just to follow up on what Alice just said, this, I just have two other things, but, you know, maybe a, a good way to do it would be to have a, I don't know, semi-regular meeting, at least for the first season with town, like maybe a quarterly meeting or a monthly meeting with, with the growers that we could all come on to either Zoom or if COVID is over, we could all meet with you guys and you could express what's going on for you and we could express what's going on for us. It might be a good way to at least initiate that first season for, for your neighbors. And the, the other thing, in the beginning, I think it was Bob Grun was asking about the the donations and, and you, if I heard correctly, you said that there was a negotiated amount of money that's supposed to go to the town. How much money is that?
Mark, do you have that handy?
I, I don't, but I, I can look it up in a matter of a minute or so.
And, and, and is there a specific, is that money earmarked for a specific purpose?
I think it's best just to, let, let's let him look it up and we can just read from the agreement.
Sure. And that, that's all I have. So whenever you have that answer, that'd be great.
Okay. So while you're looking that up, Bob Grun, I think had one more question. Oh, let me, let me go to Bob Vieringo first.
Well, I'm going back to the fact that there's going to be 35 to 40 vehicles there for a month. But on the plot plan, it doesn't show any off-street parking. Where are they going to be?
So a couple of things, Bob, just before Tom jumps in on the construction side. You know, we would anticipate people driving together, you know, it wouldn't be that everyone would be driving separate. You know, that's not the case in our other businesses or other farms. But I'll let Tom take it from there.
There will be on the final civil plan with Mike Schaefer and the Huntley Group addressing the parking concerns, which will be adjacent to the buildings and the hoop houses on that west end of the, the farm site. So within our fence, they'll be within the fenced-in area. So the parking will be not on the road. It'll be on the farm area. Each of the individual farms will have parking areas set up for the employees.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me just jump back to the chat and make sure if you, if I can't see you, throw something in chat. And if you can't do that and you're on the phone, you can just speak up now.
Doug, if I may, this is Alice. I have a follow-up to the parking question from Bob Vieringo.
Go ahead.
Typically with a site plan review, you have final, you have a final design that's being presented to you. So I guess my question is, is why are we here tonight if the final design is not here with parking included? Because typically, site plan reviews are designed to, while the marijuana and the cannabis commission oversight for security and lighting and all of that, with the site plan review, it does deal with, that is typically to deal with parking, et cetera, that goes along with that. So I just, while I'm below it, south of it, I'm not so much concerned, but if there is not final parking layout, how can you vote on a site plan review?
Well, we're not, we're not voting tonight. We, we had this meeting so we could get everybody's concerns and then we could make a list of, of things to ask the cannabis companies for. And those things so far are final drawings with septic and wells put in there with parking. And what else? And also we had a couple, we had a request for, I thought Bill Fontes had a good idea to have, to ask if they would have some kind of public forum. So these are things that the planning board can ask for since you've asked for them and we won't vote on it until after we see that and feel that you guys are covered.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yep, thank you.
Doug, this is Mark James. I, I've got the host community agreement in front of me. Was it Mr. Fontes? Did you have the question about the fees? I'm, I'm sorry. Could you restate your question so I can make sure I'm answering the correct portion?
Yeah, I appreciate it, Mark. I really was looking for, it was referenced early on that there was a, there was already fee, money is negotiated with the town that would go to the town. So my question is two-part. A, how much money are we talking about? And B, is that money earmarked that you're aware of?
Okay. The amount of the community impact fee that each company will be paying from, paying to the town will be, will be between $25,000 and $75,000. Each company will be paying that amount.
Is that annually?
Annually, yes.
You mean four times that?
Yes. The town can decide, and I, I don't want to speak out of order here, but the town can make the decision as to what they will apply those fees to. It, it's not earmarked in our host community agreement what those fees are to be used for.
Okay. Well, that's, that seems like that would pay for a lot of, of gravel and fixing up the road if, if your trucks were damaging the road. Especially since it's annual. All right. Go ahead, Bob Vieringo.
So since you have the community host agreement, can we go back to the questions that Bob Grun asked about how that worked out, the charity part of it?
Yeah, the charitable. Let me just scroll down to the correct section, session here. Each company will pay an amount of no less than $7,500 per year. And the HCA itself does not specify where the money is paid to. There's no list attached to the HCA. There's, there is no, there's no specific charity mentioned in the HCA itself.
Go ahead, Bob.
Well, then, then that gets back to the questions I had before. If you weren't given a list, then how will the decision be made? The 25 to 75 is going to the town. The town has governance of that. But the donation money, I believe, is under your governance and you choose. And so my question then becomes, how are you going to choose? Have you asked for a list? That's a yes or no question. Have you asked for a list?
I'd not asked for a list, no.
What, by, and I don't mean just you. I mean, has the LLC asked for a list in the name of the four growers?
Not a list per se. Obviously feedback. And look, we're still early in the process here. I mean, it should be noted, none of this takes impact, you know, until we have an operating facility, right? So we're still early in the process here. Obviously we have the host committee agreement. And we have the, we're in front of you today to, you know, move forward with the construction plan. This wouldn't, we're still, you know, so no, we, we, we have not asked for a list. I think there's probably been some conversations with, with different people about different charities, but I couldn't even really speak to those as I sit here.
Yeah. And, and it's good, it's going to differ for each individual company as well.
I mean, just to give you a little background on who we are and the things we're, I mean, you know, we're very focused on helping kids in foster care. We do a tremendous amount of work in that in Michigan. You know, that's, that's, that's a big focus of ours. You know, we've done community parks, contributed to that. You know, a lot of other, a lot of other charitable activities. You know, so I mean, there's different things that each of the different owners are focused on in, you know, as far as passions, charitable passions are focused on. But obviously we got to look at what's beneficial for the town of Heath as well.
Okay, thank you. Are you looking at these donations changing each year or is it going to be a long-term commitment to one or two things, whatever you decide? Or, you know, or do you think you'll try to cover a number of different bases?
I think it's just too early. I don't think, we just really have no specific strategy or plan around it. So I mean, look, I can only tell you our, our model here in Michigan, you know, I mean, there's some organizations that we give to every year, specifically foster care. You know, we also support autism. That's something we've done in repeated years. And there's some where there's a need and you give and, and, and you don't necessarily have the need every year. So I really, low income education, we've given to, I mean, so you know, we give to a kind of variety of different charitable causes. So it, it really depends on the specifics at the time. But just that we're, you know, we, we take charity and community involvement very seriously. I think we're, we have a pretty strong track record of that.
And one last question. Do you have an idea when the first donation would be made? Because it's all in process right now. What are you looking at it as a time when those donations would begin?
Well, I just want to say too, if you have, if you have recommendations of charities that are impacting the Heath community and those in need. of charities that are impacting the Heath community and those in need, you know, I'd love to, love to discuss them with you. I mean, if you have ideas, you could, you could throw them out now. So I wanted to, I wanted to ask that question. And I think your question is when it would be paid. I'd have to look at the agreement, but I don't think anything's paid until the, nothing's contractually obligated to be paid until, until we start operating. I believe.
Thanks.
I, I think the lady next to you has a question?
Yeah, Barbara, and then Susan.
Oh, Barbara, okay.
Hi. Well, I'm a little confused because I actually attended a meeting where it sounded as if a decision had been made on an organization that, at that time, it was $5,000 from each farm. So $20,000 was going to be donated to the youth recovery theater group. And that was specifically said by your representative at a select board meeting, and everybody was very pleased about it. So has there been a change of mind since then?
No, I remember that we did, you know, talk to that company and reviewed their information. So if, if that commitment was made, then that commitment was made. You know, I guess, I'm just a little, I apologize not to be, we want to answer all your questions. We came prepared. We, we had a pre-meeting to talk about things regarding planning. You know, obviously, this is, conversation's kind of taken a different turn about the, the host committee agreement, you know, which we, you know, I hadn't reviewed or even had handy for this meeting. But no, if that commitment was already made, then, then I guess it's already settled.
Well, I don't know. I mean, that's my question, was that commitment made? But if it's not appropriate...
If it was said, if it was said, if we, if we said it, then yes, it was made.
I, I don't think, actually, Barbara, I don't think that that's allowable as a part of negotiating the community host agreement. I have, I think it has to be generic. I've read a bunch of articles about this. And, and even though it's been done in other towns, I don't think that money can be earmarked for a private individual while doing the community host agreement. So I think that might have been an idea, but that, I think, I don't think that's happened. But we will, we'll look into that. We'll ask that question. We have, we have time, we're still voting. But I think, I think we'll figure that out. And I think there'll certainly be room for maybe a whole committee just to figure out, you know, how to put a proposal together for these guys. Maybe we get a, you know, a small committee that's going to say, hey, here's the different ideas that you can have. And it can't be, we want this or that. It has to be, here are the options for our town, and here's our priorities. But it's there, it's, this is a charitable donation. It has to be from them. It has to be their choice.
Agreed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. Appreciate all your feedback.
Okay, so Peter Charo, do you have anything that you'd like to add? Are you happy with what you've heard?
Yeah, no, well, I'm happy with most of it. I'm just curious, we've had discussions about the host community agreements, but does anyone on the call know what the tax regime will be for these farms? That these, I'm, I'm sure there'll be property tax that's assessed, and Alice would certainly know the answer to that. But are there also taxes on the revenues or profits of the businesses?
I think that's covered, and, and I should probably be the last person talking about this, but I, I'm pretty sure that's covered in the impact fee.
So that's taxation as well?
I might be able to help a little here. There's actually no state or local tax on, on a cultivator or wholesaler. There, there is a tax for retail, but there isn't in cultivation and wholesale. There's just the impact fees that are charged on the HCA.
And that's both at the municipal and the state level?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alice, do you know anything about the property tax side of it? It would be just, it would be the buildings?
Sorry, I was trying to figure my mouse out. Yes, it would be primarily the buildings. The land cannot go under any kind of agricultural. I sit on the farmland advisory committee at the state level with the, with members of Mass Department of Ag Resources and the Farm Bureau. And marijuana is not considered agricultural, so they can't get a tax reduction on it. And the reason behind that for many things is because a lot of the money that comes through programs like APR, which is the agricultural preservation restriction through the state, is trickled through federal, and marijuana is not considered federally acknowledged. Thereby, they will pay full boat. Could very well be at a commercial rate. I'm not sure yet. I've got to do some further stuff on that. But, and their buildings and the house, yes.
Okay.
Sorry. Sorry. And a follow-up, if there's any kind of, you know, if they have any kind of machinery or whatever, depending on how they're established, how the individual LLCs are established, there may be some taxation on the personal property side, but probably pretty minimal if it is.
All right. Jan, and then back to Peter Charo, if he'd like to say anything.
I'm looking at the host community agreement that's posted on the select board page. And I'm looking at the first one with Alchemy on page five, under annual charitable nonprofit contributions. And it says that they will annually contribute to a local or regional nonprofit social service charities and/or organization in Heath, preferably one that supports the elderly or underprivileged in the greater Heath community in an amount of no less than $7,500. And this payment shall be made annually, beginning on November 1st, 2021. Is that outdated, or has this payment already been made?
That should, this is Mark James speaking. That should be November 1st, 2020, 2022, as the payments weren't to start until after operations had begun.
So I guess these all have to be corrected, then?
Yes.
And the, the amount of 7,500 rather than 5,000?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And it's no less than 7,500.
Right.
All right, back to Susan Gruen.
Thank you, Doug. And I just want to reiterate, you know, what Barbara said. There's so many rumors going around in terms of money and the discussion today, that we had a vague discussion with other people. I think it's important that transparency, and that's what we're doing at this meeting, has been very beneficial to get our, our questions answered. And to make sure that when this discussion comes up again, that there is a list that we can preview of all the charitable organizations that we feel would benefit the whole town, and not just parts of the town. I think that's extremely important. And I support the fact that there should be a committee for that. Thank you.
Do I hear a volunteer? Is that a volunteer I'm hearing?
I'm not volunteering. Doug, I'm not volunteering, but I have a, a question about the contract that was signed by the town and these four, four companies. So if, as the lawyer said, the contract should be reading November 2022, the town and these four companies have signed a contract that's not accurate. Is it saying November 2021?
Well, it's also saying... I think we gotta look at the whole context of the contract. I, I think it says when operations start. I don't have it in front of me again, but I think, I think it's...
No, it says November 2021, on page five.
I understand that, but I'm saying, if you, if you look at the whole contract in context, I think there's a section that talks about that, that our obligations would start once the operations would start, I believe. But again, we can, we're gonna have a meeting about a contract. We can have that meeting at, at some point as well. We can read the contract and have that meeting.
But what's been signed here is not accurate if it's supposed to be 2022, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah. Well, I wouldn't say it's not accurate if it, if there's other language and it says it wouldn't start until operations start.
But there's language in here that's saying it's going to start in November 2021. So which, which controls?
Well, actually, we have to read the whole contract in context, which, you know, I apologize, I wasn't prepared for this meeting.
All I'm saying is if, if there are inaccuracies, inaccuracies in this contract, then the contract isn't valid.
So I think, I think Calvin, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think that as long as we make sure that gets done this week before we, before the planning board votes on it, which we'll do at a, at a, which we can do at a regular meeting, that, that would probably be all right. If it also, also if it says, if it says 5,000 in that contract, and they're willing to do 7,500, then it certainly behooves us to change the contract, doesn't it?
But this is a contract that was signed by the Board of Selectment and, and the four companies. So my position is, if this, if there's an, if there are inaccuracies in this contract, this is going to have to go back and be redone, and then be resigned by the Board of Selectment and resigned by these four companies.
Right. And that all has to happen before we can do a permit, because we have to have a valid and agreed-upon community host agreement as part of this package, this application.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Bill, you still got your hand up?
I do. It's back up. So I, just, and this has probably been covered between the planning board, but just for my own edification. So we have a 50-acre plot with four farms that are going to cover 20 acres of it. Is there anything that says they can't bring more people in to fill up that 50 acres?
Yes, they would have to come back to the planning board. And at that point, the, the problem, the way it's drawn, the way it is, is because of the conservation commission, they don't have enough. I'll let them answer this, but I don't think they have enough non, it's a lot of wetlands that they're working around on this property. So I'll, I'll throw that out to the, to you guys. But I don't think that there's enough, I don't think they can add anymore.
I might be able to assist you a little bit here. There are limits on how much each of these companies can grow. You're only allowed to have 100,000 square feet of what's called plant canopy per company. So none, and these companies are all going to be at their maximum of 100,000 square feet. So they can't come back, this is it. There's no more, you know, canopy that they can grow. So these companies, is it, you know, assuming for a moment, and I don't think, I'm not sure that the rest of it is even usable, assuming it was, the landlord might go out and find another potential company that wants to come in and be a tenant, but that's, that's not the plan right now. And I'm not sure, again, because of the, the conservation issues, I'm not sure that's realistic. Yeah, that was kind of my question, could they bring more farmers in?
No, that, well, I, I've looked at the wetlands and what's forested and what they're allowed to cut, and the way they've drawn this, I don't, I don't think they could, I think that, and I think at that point, someone could just buy another property and do this whole thing again. That is not impossible, but I think this, this wouldn't be a good place to do it.
The, the other thing is just the, the host committee, they would have to get a host committee agreement and then go through this whole process to, to do another farm.
All right. Any planning board members have any final things to say? Chief McDonough, do you have any questions you want to throw in?
No, I'm good, Doug, thank you.
Okay. Just making sure you're awake. Hey, Doug?
To the chair, if I could?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I just want, and I'm, I'm sort of thinking ahead to the Cannabis Control Commission, looking at everything, and I want to make sure, th- this meeting that we're holding right now, is this technically sort of a, a meeting for all four companies? Or are we, I mean, I think we've gotten all of the issues out for all four companies, but will this cover it? Or do we sort of just open another meeting after this one for the next company, and another meeting after this one for the next company?
You know what, let's, let's just do that.
I think it makes sense.
We can, yeah, we can close this meeting, open a new one. But nobody asks, asks the same questions over again, please.
So Doug?
Yeah.
That was my question that, that the attorney brought up. Are you going to continue this to another public hearing? Are you going to close this one and then have another public hearing? Or is this the only public hearing? It seems to me there are a lot of balls in the air, and it may benefit all parties to continue this public hearing to another date while everything gets resolved. My two cents.
Okay. Well, what is, what is the planning board think? I, I thought, it seems like all the questions are out. I have my list of, of things that we have to ask for, but I'm happy to continue it. What, what does the board think?
Why don't we just continue it if we have other business that's unresolved and has to be, has to be decided?
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think because there are open questions, let's just continue the meeting.
Okay.
Then we have, everybody's on the same page.
Okay, well, then that leads me to the next thing, is do we have to open and, let's open and close four public hearings right now, or open and continue four public hearings? Because they were all supposed to run concurrently. So I would entertain a motion that we continue the public hearing for Alchemy Cannabis at 11 Baylor Road in Heath.
I'm moved.
All in favor, Doug I?
Bob I. Peter I.
Joe I.
Okay, so continued, oh, we have to have a date to continue it too. Hang on. Do you, let me get back here so I can see you all. Is, is March, what do you think, March 8th is long enough to figure everything out?
I think it's okay.
March 8th is a Tuesday. All right, so let me, I'm gonna start over. I would entertain a motion that we continue the public hearing for Alchemy Cannabis at 11 Baylor Road in Heath, Massachusetts, for four companies, for, for, to, to March 8th at 7:00 PM. Doug I?
Bob I. Peter I.
Joe I.
Okay, so now I would like to open a public hearing.
Doug, I apologize.
What's that?
I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but I'm just, you know, we can definitely get whatever open issues turned around very quickly on our end. So we do not need a month. And just to, you know, obviously, we have the, the pressure here of trying to get open this season, you know, which is a pretty tight timeline. So, you know, I know you already motioned and approved it there. I, I apologize, I didn't want to interrupt. But, you know, we can turn around whatever questions to us, I mean, in a matter of a day or two. I mean, I don't, I don't think anything there was too big of a lift.
All right, and that, does that include the, your drawings and stuff that you need to do with...
Well, so, and I apologize, and Tom or Mike are on the line, they could talk more intelligently than I can on this, but I thought that, you know, we go through this step of the planning, and then we submit the construction documents... the planning, and then we submit the construction documents to the city, you know, to your building department in a more formal process, but I thought that that was a later submittal, you know, with its own requirements.
All right, so.
So if we waited till everything was done to finalize the planning, then we're losing like a month or so, because there's other submittals that will need, you know, that need to be done after that.
The community is at no risk because of the process that you have. The drawings won't get approved. We won't, you know, if we don't have proper septic well parking that meets the local ordinances. So there's really, on those specific questions, if we don't meet that, we don't move in. We don't get approval. So we've got, it's our burden to meet the community requirements.
All right, so do you want? So what do you think is realistic? I don't want to have to do this again. So is two weeks the right amount?
I mean, really, if you, we have everybody on the line here. I mean, if you tell us the specific asks, and we can talk about it internally, but when you listed it earlier, there were very, I mean, it didn't seem like anything we couldn't knock out in a day. And I don't want to, I mean, we have a-
We basically had three items. The final drawings showed septic well parking, community outreach, and then the HCA, which we, I think, addressed that. So the final drawings, like I say-
It's just how, they don't, you don't have a construction document.
From a public hearing standpoint, I don't see what it calls that.
You need to, I think you need to have time to do the new contract with the select board.
So I don't think that's, and I don't mean disrespect to anybody. I don't think that's accurate. And I don't think that we should, you know, in a planning meeting, you know, talk about one line on a contract and say, I mean, you know, so there is a commencement of operations in the agreement. You know, I think, you know, I don't think that, yeah, I don't think that's accurate, that we need to go back to the select board, with all due respect to everybody. I think it was always, if, it was always that operations would be commenced previous to that date, or whenever operations were commenced. Phil, it sounds like you have a question, though.
Well, I just have a suggestion, because I've seen this done in numerous communities where they have a very similar provision, that you've got to have a host agreement. The, I've seen a special permit be conditioned upon having a host agreement, and it can be clear that you're not going to get a building permit until you have a host agreement. Technically, you do have a host agreement. What you really need to do is just amend it a little bit to fix some things. So you actually have already satisfied that provision, but I think it's clear that there needs to be an amendment that fixes the host agreement.
Okay, so.
Again, I don't know that there needs to be an amendment. I think if red is all in context, if red is a complete contract, I think if they, I think-
Again, that's possible. You may be right, but it shouldn't hold up your permit, because you can just condition the permit on having a valid host agreement.
I'm going to, let me just call on Hilma. I'm going to call on Hilma because she is wise in the ways of our processes.
Okay. I think tomorrow morning, I'm sure that myself and Mark James and Heath Town Council can figure out exactly what needs to be done to correct that line or make it more accurate in the HCA agreement. It doesn't negate the rest of the HCA, as far as I know. And I don't think it'll stop scheduling the next session of the public hearing. If there is something else needed to be signed by the select board, assuming that it is drafted by February 15th, the select board will review it on February 15th, assuming it's acceptable, they will sign it.
Okay, and Hilma, I want to ask you a question, just a technical question. Can we open and close all of these public hearings, open and continue them all concurrently? Or do I have to open and continue, open and continue, open and continue?
Well, unfortunately, what I heard, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, what I heard was that you motioned to call the public hearing for Alchemy to order at the beginning. I don't think you had a motion for all four. So technically, you're just having a hearing for one of them. I think you, once you motioned to continue Alchemy's hearing to a date and time certain, and state what it is, you could then ask for a motion to open a concurrent hearing for the other three, and do the other three simultaneously. And all you're doing, essentially, asking for a motion to open, asking if there's any questions, or asking for a motion to continue all three.
Okay. I do think I asked in the beginning, but I think it'd be safer just to do it. So, I mean, I think I said all four of them in the beginning, but we'll do them all, all three together. So now, I would entertain a motion to, and let me ask, let me ask-
Doug, when is the soonest we could reconvene? I think that's where we're at. We could come back very quickly with any answers, even this week. But when is the soonest we could convene?
Or in the alternative, if you were open to closing the public hearing, just to check that box, but then issuing with conditions that have been raised, you know, to protect the community's points of interest. And our only goal here, and I'm just being candid about it, is just trying to move it forward. You know, we have a compressed timeline here. You know, I'm very open. All of us are very open, very accessible. We're not trying to hide from anything, but we're just trying to, if we're going to be operating this season, you know, we have to be mindful of the timeline we have.
Okay, well, I need two days to post my actual, our actual public hearing, not public hearing, planning board meeting. So planning board members, are you available on Thursday, the 10th?
Hilma, the 10th?
10. 7 o'clock.
In the morning?
No, no, at night.
I read it in the morning. Should be okay, I think.
Joe?
Yep, I'm available.
Bob?
Okay.
Okay. So, let's see if I can get this right. I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for Alchemy Cannabis at 11 Baylor Road in Heath until, that was, until Wednesday, or until Thursday, February 10th? Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Doug, I?
Peter, I.
Joe, I.
Did you say I, Bob? Okay. Now, I would entertain a motion, and that is, what time is it? 8:44. And now I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for True Cannabis, Vega Cannabis, and VYBZ Inc. for a special permit for a marijuana facility at 11 Baylor Road in Heath. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A roll call vote, Doug, I?
Bob, I.
Joe, I.
You're not, Joe. Peter?
Peter, I.
Okay. And is there any discussion on the public hearing? Seeing no hands, I would entertain a motion that we continue the public hearing for True Cannabis, Vega Cannabis, and VYBZ Inc. for a marijuana facility at 11 Baylor Road, a special permit for a marijuana facility at 11 Baylor Road in Heath. And I'd like to continue that until February 10th at 7 o'clock.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call vote, Doug, I?
Bob, I.
Peter, I.
Okay, that was continued at 8:46. That was our four shortest meetings we ever had, by the way. All right, and now I would entertain a motion that we close our planning board meeting for this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Doug, I.
Bob, I.
Joe, I.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night, and we'll see you on the 10th at 7 o'clock.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate everybody's time and feedback. Thanks for making the accommodation.
Yep. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.